Planning Commission for twenty-two April.
Okay, I'll repeat that again. Let's start this meeting for the planning commission for twenty-two April. Erica, could you please do a roll call and let everyone know how to get in touch?
Sure. Chair Bluth?
Here.
Vice Chair Silva?
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield? Commissioner Dawson?
Here.
Commissioner Freeman?
Sure.
And Commissioner Lotassa?
Here.
Okay, and I will go ahead and announce staff members present. We have our planning manager Levi Hill. We have our principal planner Fernando Rovary. We have our senior associate planner Matthew Buggerd, and we have myself, recording secretary Erica Barrera. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/board/agendas. Remote commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak, and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Thanks, Erica. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. It looks like all we have is the minutes from April eighth. Any comments on the minutes? Anybody in the audi-
Move to accept.
Well, let's anybody in the audience have any comments on the minutes? I see none. Erica, anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
Standing. Um, yes, let's go ahead and do that.
I'm moved to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second that.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. Erica, could you please do a roll call?
Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman? And Commissioner Lotassa?
Upstate.
Okay, the minutes have been approved.
Great, thank you. Do we have, we'll open it up for comments on issues not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment? Yay, Dan.
Put weight on that. If I'm getting emotional, it's because of the drugs, okay? I just, I really wanted to come back and say thank you to you all. For the last fifteen years, I've had the pleasure of serving the city of Monterey. First as a historic preservation commissioner, and then as a planning commissioner. Consequential work is being done here, and I'm always impressed by the thoughtfulness at which everything's been considered. And every once in a while, I'm impressed, like when Peter asked how to, I remember this, a question for staff on page five hundred and twelve, paragraph three. I was like, wow, that was great. But I have enjoyed my time here, and I, and some of you may know I have Parkinson's and have had it for a while, and I had an opportunity to get a one-story, no stairs, because I'm living on three flights of stairs now, house, one of my favorite architects designed in High Meadow, and so I had to grab it. Unfortunately, it falls just outside of the city of Monterey, and along with the move came my resignation to planning commission. And I also want to say thank you to the staff, who has been so professional and knowledgeable and fair. It's been, it's been a great pleasure of mine to serve, and I just wanted you all to know that, and to come and say good luck and goodbye for the time being, and I want to wish you all well. Thank you.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Yay!
And I got to tell you, I got to use that thing out there for the first time. I always wondered who would ever get to use it.
And it worked! Thanks, Dan. Okay, so on to less fun things. We'll move on to the-
Anyone online?
Oh, can't find that out right now. So do we have anyone online for comments not on the agenda?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Okay, now we'll be, go back to first public appearance item, which is consider five nineteen Hartnell Street use permit application UP twenty-five zero zero five five for massage establishment. Do we have a presentation?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Fernando Rovary, principal planner for the city of Monterey. Before you today is a massage establishment use permit for five nineteen Hartnell Street. The building is indicated by this red dot. It is in the downtown area, fronting on Hartnell Street. In the back is the parking lot that is known as the Trader Joe's Parking Lot. And this is a view of the building on the side. You can see that Carl's Alley is in front, and it goes down toward the parking lot. So this building has a two-story component to it. The proposed location is actually a suite in the back facing the parking lot on the second story. And I'm indicating it with a circle, this yellow circle. The proposed suite is five nineteen A. It's at the corner, as you saw, and it's in the back. There are no other massage establishments in this building. It's comprised of different types of services, like nails salon and hair salon, retail sales, realty services, et cetera. The proposed floor plan is the, the front, the front door would lead into first a dental whitening room, which has another door that leads into a hallway. And there's a storage room, and then there's a massage therapy room with a window. The dental whitening is not, does not require a use permit. It is, it is a permitted use in the downtown. But the massage does require the use permit. I'm showing this building because the applicant, Dominica Golf, applied for a use permit for a massage establishment at one forty West Franklin Street in twenty twenty-one, and the planning commission approved that. And it is Ms. Golf's intent to leave this location and move to five nineteen Hartnell Street. So she would be moving from the Alvarado District to the East Village District. This is a map of the downtown specific plan, character areas. And the difference between these two character areas is that in the Alvarado District, more active uses are preferred, active such as retail and restaurants. And ground floor personal services on Alvarado are inappropriate. On the East Village District, active uses are also encouraged, but it also allows services for residents. So what you think as non-active uses, such as dentist offices and massage establishments, et cetera. So in, in the East Village District, these type of uses that are considered offices or personal services are more encouraged than in, in the Alvarado District. The proposed use is called Ocean Flowers Therapeutics. The owner is a certified massage therapist specializing in lymphatics. So she works with patients that have pain from various autoimmune diseases and basically uses massage to alleviate pain. And her proposed hours are from seven AM to seven PM, seven days a week. And she works by herself, and she plans on booking one to two clients per appointment. And she's also proposing to do the dental whitening in the other room. The proposed, the findings for approving a use permit is that the use is in accord with the objectives of the zoning ordinance. And the project being located in the East Village District is a type of service for residents. And this, so this complies with the downtown specific plan objectives, oh, point one point three. The massage establishment would contribute to the provision of personal services for the community. The project would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, and will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity in that the, it supports general plan goals of supporting local small businesses and enhancing commercial activity. This use would be located entirely within an existing commercial building, and the downtown specific plan has no parking requirements. So providing a provision of parking is not required, and there would be no noise or any other impact, because it would all be contained within an existing building. The use would also comply with health and safety regulations, business license requirements, a massage permit through the Monterey Police Department, and any other regulations. And these are listed in the conditions of approval in the resolution. Lastly, the use will comply with any specific condition. So as I, as I mentioned, conditions include securing a valid business license, ensuring that the massage therapist has a certain, her certification is active, and adhering to operational hours, which is seven AM to seven PM, seven days a week. With that, staff recommends approval of the use permit with the conditions in the attached resolution. I'm here for questions, and the applicant is online.
Thanks, Fernanda. Any questions for Fernanda?
Would you show that map of the inside of the building showing all the tenants? Am I right in observing, just as a longtime resident, that the only businesses here that have signage on the public street are the three front ones that are on, I guess it's Hartnell, the Pilates, the Consignment, and the Real Estate? And all these other ones don't seem to have any signage outside their businesses?
They have at the corner of five thirteen A, there's a directory of maybe two by one, maybe two square foot sign with the directory of all the businesses in this building. And then, as you go to the back, they have projecting signs, but maybe a one-square-foot projecting sign outside the door of each business facing the back.
I was just asking because of the letters that were written saying too many massage establishments, and it's not like there's a big sign out there.
Right.
On this same map, I just noticed, right as you pulled it up, you mentioned earlier that this building doesn't have any other massage establishments, but there's a listing for a, an office here. And it's kind of hard to read, but I'll try my best. I think it says some being CMT. Isn't CMT a certified massage therapist?
Oh, I was not aware.
Still note, they don't have a business license for that, including in the, included in the agenda report was the map of the existing massage establishments within the five hundred-foot radius of this location, and this location does not have an existing active business license for massage establishment. So that may be what is included on that floor plan that was provided by the applicant. It's possible it's not up to date, or it's possible that they're no longer practicing massage therapy in that location. But there's not an active use permit or business license for that location.
How does that happen? Is, is someone can just lease and rent a space without even bothering to get a license?
So they're definitely required to get a license, both the business license for, specifically for massage establishments are required to get the use permit for their zoning approval, because that's what's required for massage establishments. And then they're also required to get their business license, but a specific business license that also goes through PD and our finance department. So they are required to get a business before, a business license before operating, and specifically additional requirements apply to massage establishments as well.
Okay, so if the staff report identified this business as a, another massage establishment, would that sway staff's opinion regarding the recommendation for approval on this application?
Nothing with specific application. I think, as Fernanda mentioned earlier, the specific character area, the downtown specific plan does support services and businesses of personal services, as you see in this particular building. That's primarily what type of businesses are in this multi-tenant building. So I think we included the map, just so that the commission's aware of how many we have in this area, as that's kind of been our typical practice as of late, when we bring these forward to the commission, just so you have all the information. I don't think it would have affected staff's opinion in this particular instance, though.
Thank you.
Mike?
Is this the hours of seven to seven, seven days a week? Is that by appointment only or walk-ins?
By appointment only.
Is there be more than one employee working? Did we know?
She indicates that it will only be her working.
That's a pretty progressive schedule, twelve hours a day, every day. That's why I ask. Some of the letters that we, we got mentioned, the numbers, does the city track numbers in which district they are in, are applying?
So we have a database, as far as, from our finance department, as far as what businesses have received the appropriate licenses for massage establishments. We haven't gone through and necessarily distributed that data across districts, or even, you know, whether that's council districts or areas of the downtown specific plan. We've just been taking it case by case as we bring them forward to you, this body, to identify how many we have in existence in a five hundred-foot radius.
So do we have a number, how many in this, this area?
So we have, and within the five hundred-foot radius, currently, there's five existing massage establishments within five hundred feet of this particular location. So upon approval, this would be six in the five hundred-foot radius. As Fernanda mentioned earlier, though, this is a relocating business that has their existing businesses in the Alvarado District, which is a less supportable character area. So as staff saw it, this is a more appropriate area for them to relocate to.
On the, the concerns, has the city examined a, what they thought would be a limit in a number, in an area?
It hasn't been discussed in a formal manner, no, not yet.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the comments. Well, does the-
The applicant is online, and there are hands raised.
Oh, great.
I can go ahead and allow them to talk.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Dominica Golf.
Yes.
Hi, good evening to everyone, and thank you for your time. I just wanted to let you know that I have had my license for thirty-five years. I'm a lymphedema therapist. So what I specialize in is cosmetic surgery, recovery, and oncology. I have five surgeons that refer their patients to me, and I usually only see a patient in the morning at like ten or an eleven fifteen. And that's about it. I leave my services open like seven to seven so that I can have those calls, because I am just a single mom and trying to keep this establishment going. But I've had my location for four years on Franklin Street. It's done quite well. And I also do, like, chair massage events and stuff like that for Chomp and other locations, and everything has to go through the police department. Everything is, I have to be, I have to jump through more than a hundred hoops to keep my business and to keep us a massage therapist. So I just wanted to say that I just, I'm already in business. I just need to relocate, because the person next to me at my new locate, at my old location moved in, and he does teeth whitening. And so I'm not able to do my business there. It's hindering my business. And also, it's not accessible for wheelchair people, and I have a lot of people that are in a wheelchair, and they're not able to get into that office. So that's all I wanted to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Golf. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Golf? Right, open it up to public comment. Does anybody in chambers have a, a comment to make on this item? Eric, anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
Right, we'll pull it back. Any discussion?
It seems like a, a really great, sort of specific niche massage practice, and I'm in support of the application.
I think that it goes to what exactly what staff had recommended, that this is for locals, not for tourists. And it conducts a service for the locals as well. I also, I agree with Terry.
I, I think that the location is really a good idea, and great for her to move there, and without the, you know, big signage like, what, what's the one massage envy, you know, whereas you're driving into town? I really think that the people's comments don't really consider the, the fact that it's quite hidden, and it's in a building that has similar services, and I would vote to approve it.
I, I actually have a follow-up question to staff, and that is, if we go back to the map of the floor plan, the applicant is proposing dental whitening services? Is, is that something that is principally permitted?
It is, yes.
So that's not before us at all?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have an issue with this. I mean, we have an applicant that already has a business that's been doing this for years, and she's moving from one location to the next. It seems awfully benign to me, and it would be extraordinarily punitive if we as a body decide to place onerous conditions or try to prevent this from happening. So I'm in support of it.
Great. Mike, any comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of it as well. I think, I think that this is the building where the, the Alcoholics Anonymous met, I mean, for years. So it's, this is possibly a better, a better fit.
Mike?
I'll move to approve the item as submitted.
Great.
Second, I'll second that.
Super. Erica, could, we have a motion and a second. Could you do a roll call?
Sure. Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotassa?
Yes.
If that motion carries with a vote of six, the decision is appealable within ten days to our city council with applications online or in our planning office.
Thank you. Second item on the public, on public hearings. Consider one one five zero Monrose Avenue Architecture Review Permit APR twenty-five dash zero zero five nine for structural repairs for existing hotel applicant, Kent Urgent.
Chair Bluth, I have a conflict of interest on this, and I will recuse myself.
All right, bold, bold. See you next meeting.
Are you going home or are you gonna?
I'm hanging out.
Okay, we have a staff presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will share my screen. My name is Matthew Buggert, and I'm a senior associate planner with the City of Monterey's Planning Division. Today, we're here to talk about 1150 Monroe Avenue for an architectural review application for balcony and railing updates. The recommendation from staff is that the planning commission adopt the resolution to approve the architectural review application with conditions of approval. The site is located in the center, south central area of the city between Monroe Avenue and Cass Street. The general plan and zoning designation for this property is VAF, which is Visitor Accommodation Facility. And the city charter establishes that the VAF zone, any of the development review, there are certain procedures that applications and projects need to go through, including any structural work that is proposed at a property to be reviewed specifically by the planning commission. Non-structural work is reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee. The repairs that are included here include some structural work, including the replacement of balcony support beams, and therefore it's before you today. The proposed balcony repairs and updates have to do with, there was a partially failed balcony and repairs were started on it. The repair work was red-tagged, and in general, all of the balconies on the second floor for this hotel need some updates to bring it up to modern building code. So we're kind of capturing the initial repairs from the failing balcony along with proposed work in the future. And so here you can see some of the underfloor and some of the type of repair work that needs to be done and brought into compliance with city code, going through the building permit review process. I kind of went over it already, but repair, the project includes the repair of necessary beams with in-kind replacement, raising the height of any balconies that are substandard. There are areas where it's a little higher and a little lower, and they're going to make it more consistent. And repairing or replacing any areas with rotted wood or that are otherwise not up to code. The extent of the repair work is included on buildings B and C. The failed balcony area is on building B, the long straight one. And updates to follow up building code would be on both of these buildings, on a straight balcony on building B, and a curved balcony with straight portions on building C. Therefore, findings required for approval of an architectural review application, that the sighting form, mass, and style must be found to be appropriate for the site. There are no significant aesthetic updates that are proposed, or expansion of the building envelope, just some minor raising of the railings, that the project would not impair views, privacy, or the environment. Again, no change to the building envelope, that the project would be consistent with guiding documents. This is largely a repair project, and no inconsistencies were found by staff, and that the finished colors and materials are appropriate for the site. Any repairs there would be painted to match the existing building. No proposed updates are included there either. With that, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the resolution to approve the architectural review application with the standard conditions of approval, there being a two-year period for it to be approved and so forth. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is in the room.
Thanks, Matthew. Any questions for Matthew?
I guess I have a question. It seems like a waste of everybody's time to bring a structural repair. The way you presented it, the VAF zone and the city charter somehow calls for structural work to go to the planning commission.
Yes.
But I assume you looked at the language of the charter and it said that any structural work has to go to the PC. That's the way it goes?
And pass through with the city attorney for confirmation, yes. In terms of implementation in the past versus what we should be doing in general, that is how the charter code is written.
I'm trying to think of a situation where you would have a structural, structural work on a building that would be controversial or somehow, I guess if it was in a setback or impacted, you know, environmental issues or something, I don't know. It just seems, it seems like almost like the, you know, that language of that charter could stand to be changed to say, you know, minor, minor structural stuff is exempt because this, this seems like a waste of everybody's time. Not that you've, you've done an excellent job, and I don't mean to denigrate you, but I'm just sort of bending your.
Does red tagging affect it?
Not in this case. So, and I'll just weigh in, as Matthew said, yes, staff doesn't necessarily disagree that this seems like a little bit of a heavy hand to be bringing ordinary repairs before the planning commission, whether they're structural or not. However, that is the exact wording of the charter, is that ordinary repairs in kind and ordinary maintenance, if it has a structural component comes before this body. If it doesn't have a structural component, still is required to go to ARC, that's the committee, not even a staff level architectural review, review. We have discussed it with the city attorney, and yes, that is, the plain reading of the language does, is pretty clear. As you've alluded to, it would be nice to have that updated. However, as it is written into the charter, it is beyond staff's ability to simply recommend an amendment to that. With that being said, we can cross our fingers and hope that one day we get there.
Yeah.
But I will just note that I think as many on this body probably maybe recall, when the VAF was introduced as a zoning district at that time and introduced as a part of the charter, it was, I think it was the intent at that time to be somewhat heavy-handed and restricted as to what happens on these properties and to exercise a pretty healthy amount of control over what happens on these properties. So I think that's the origins of it. I do agree, I think now we've come a long ways where we probably don't necessarily feel that way, but.
Yeah, if that part of the charter was ever changed, seems easy enough to just say minor, you know, minor stuff exempt. It just seems like a waste of time, but anyway.
The VAF section of the charter in general could definitely stand for, to be updated.
Okay.
And hopefully we get there one day.
Levi, didn't we have something similar to this come up a couple months ago?
We did, and that's.
Fremont.
Yeah. I think that's something else that's at play here is I think there's a lot of our VAF properties are probably hitting a point in their lives where they're probably due for some structural repairs, and that's another reason we may see an increase of these coming up. We have a lot of, I know a lot of our VAF owners are proposing or looking to do maintenance work on their properties.
When you consider how few have come to this, to the commission, and I mean, just looking back, and I may, this may have been on ARC, there was like a manager's unit that was built into one of the hotels on Monroe, and then the real nice one, the green one on the corner of Monroe and Sanctuary Rentals, he put in the new fence. I mean, it was like, I think those are the only three others that I can even remember. So does this mean that all of those properties aren't doing maintenance?
So again, if it's not structural, it'll go to our ARC typically.
Yeah.
So if it's not structural and staff tries to look at that pretty literally, we'll admit, if there's a structural component, we're erring on the side of caution, probably going to bring them to this body. If there's not, then they go to the ARC for review. Yeah.
Yeah, I was on ARC for a few years. I don't remember any coming before us. So this, maybe you're right, there's a wave that's about ready to hit.
Sure.
Ken, do you want to do a presentation?
No, I think staff did a great job. To speak to Mr. Otassa's comments, state law is requiring a lot of these properties to have their decks inspected. So you're going to see a lot of these. Every year, they're going to have to have them inspected. If there's dry rot or any type of structural problems, we can't just get a building permit. You have to go through this whole process first. And the irony is that the cost to do this is more than the building permit, probably about three times as much. So I agree. So what the problem was, notwithstanding of them taking care of a lot of dry rot on these decks, because as you have these aged buildings coming into, you know, with decks that are attached to buildings, you know, you're going to have a lot of dry rot, a lot of water damage. You know, they used a handyman not thinking about it, and the work wasn't done properly. They were stopped, brought me in, and so we've taken care of the detailing and whatnot for this. We are not changing the look of this at all, other than the part that was systematically removed due to water damage. It will look exactly the same other than raising the guardrails because they're, they vary, as was stated earlier, some are 35, some are 40, depends on the step of the, of the, because the access deck in question is actually the deck that wraps around both buildings that accesses the second floor, and it's all exterior. So the only access for the second floor is on the exterior of the building. So this is why it's important to obviously get this done. So notwithstanding of anything else, we're basically putting it back the way it was. The, it's just basically joist hangers and whatnot that are going to be put in, no extra columns, and then it's going to be sealed up and it's going to look exactly the way it did before. So that's my spiel. And any questions?
Thanks, Ken. Any questions for Ken? You're free.
Kind of hangers, or, oh, no, never mind. Thanks, Terry.
Okay, why don't we open it up for a public comment? Anybody in chambers have a comment? None seeing, Erica, anybody online?
There are no hands raised.
All right, we'll bring it back for discussion. Any discussion on this item? Yes, Mike?
Beyond what Levi contributed, I've had three different people talk to me about hotels, motels in Monterey recently. The main concern is that our TOT might be reducing due to the influence of new accommodations in other cities that are coming online. So I, after we did 2042 Fremont, I thought, I looked at some of the motels along North Fremont and downtown. Maybe we do, as the gentleman explained, there's new regulations by the state that's going to cause us to refresh some of these older buildings, and so we might be seeing more work in that regard. I just wanted to contribute that I think that it's, we need to pay attention to it because that is one of our primary issues in the city is our tourists and their accommodations.
It seems like in the, in the future, if there was a group of, I imagine this isn't the only sort of semantic change in the charter, and unless it has to go to a vote of the people, it would be not, oh, it does? Oh, forget it then.
If you change the charter.
Forget about it, okay. We'll just have to suffer through unless we, maybe there's some way of collecting a whole bunch of them and getting, it seems like so much work. It's just ridiculous.
But we just did that with the term limit, so it's not impossible.
It's not.
Have to get on the ballot and explain to people what it is, but there was a minor one in there as well that was somewhat.
There was a housekeeping one, they, yeah, so the council discusses and takes up what charter amendments they're going to put forward and recommend that go on a voter ballot. It gets discussed with each election. It's not, it's not impossible. Like I said, I think there's conversations that have been had about possibly, like possibly updating, the need to update our VAF section of our charter. I don't know how much it's been updated since its original, you know, establishment in the charter. So I think that would be the appropriate time to kind of make these administrative changes if we were in support of making those changes, but it's certainly thing, certainly something I can, I can mention to my bosses and that they can continue to communicate that upward to council as well.
That, that to me is a mousetrap. You know, you go start, start to mess with the, with the charter and, and other, other forces come into play. So it's really, really good idea to put your hands in your pockets and walk away.
Yeah, it can be. I will say it's very unique situation for the city to have a zoning component in the charter. It's a little bit unique to the, to the city of Monterey to have a zoning district that's established and controlled through the charter rather than the zoning code. It's kind of re-stated in the zoning code, but it pretty much is what.
It took a lot of work to put that in the charter, a lot.
I can imagine.
And when you look at some of the disasters we've had in other cities where like balconies fall, those are the kind of things that, in order to ensure our safety, I'm sure that was part of the consideration. But why we need to, because having watched the detailed destruction and reconstruction along North Fremont project, there was substantial amount of work in both parts, taking down the damaged material and replacing it in kind. So I appreciate what Terry said, but we also need to exercise on the side of caution.
But it's really a building code issue. It's not a, it's not a zoning issue, to me.
In the case of North Fremont, they actually had to shut down entire half of the building. So it was, that's substantial. So, yeah.
Well, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion pass resolution with the conditions.
Sandy, do you want to second?
Mm-hmm.
Second. So we have a motion, a second. Erica, could you please do a roll call?
I can. As Vice Chair Silva mentioned, he's recused. So we have Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Otassa.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries, and it is appealable to the city council within 10 days. Applications are online or in the planning office.
Thank you. Anybody have any commissioner comments?
I'm going to miss Dan. One of the first commissions I came to with a project, he was the chair, and I was impressed how tough he was on some people who didn't like what was going on. So he's going to be missed. Also having two architects on the commission, I thought was helpful. Now we're going to be down to Terry.
Yeah. No, Dan is great. He has an amazing sort of institutional memory too for the city of Monterey. I remember he was on the Pacific Grove Planning Commission for a long time too. So he's really been, you know, put a lot of time into public service down the peninsula for decades.
Peter's an architect.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, he had three.
Three.
Yeah.
True.
I thought the idea of bundling was good, where if this comes to pass that there's a space of balconies and railings and decks and stairwells in the VAF, that maybe we could inform them that all of these repairs that are required by the state will be heard every two months, and then we could bundle them all together and, you know, get it done.
You know, I guess we'll see if there's a lot coming our way.
That was it, we're overworked.
No. You want more?
No.
More.
Efficiency.
Levi, do you have anything for us today?
Yeah, just real quickly, as noted in the report, a quick update from the April 15 city council meeting. It was a pretty active meeting. I don't know if you followed, but there was, it was long, there was a lot going on there. So just quick update, some of it involves this group or was, they were, the council was considering things that this body has already previously considered. So just to catch you up on that, we did, they did adopt the first reading of an ordinance that would require the new businesses and existing businesses receive the zoning clearance permit that this body recommended approval of. So that passed first reading on the 15th, and we'll go forward to second reading on, I believe, May 6th. And then they also heard that evening, the, the appeal of the planning commission's decision to deny the driveway variance at 548 Mar Vista Drive. After a public hearing and consideration of that item, the council upheld the planning commission's decision to deny that variance. So that's, that will continue on as a denial, and they will be required to restore that driveway to a compliant condition. And then the other action that you may have heard of but didn't come before this body is that the council passed on first reading of a sidewalk vending ordinance update, they would update the regulations for sidewalk vendors. And the reason that didn't come before this body before going. And the reason that didn't come before this body, before going to council to receive the recommendation like you may would maybe would think it would, is that those regulations are actually located in chapter 32 of the municipal code, which is the streets and sidewalks code, rather than the zoning code that the planning commission that requires recommendations from the planning commission. So, but they did pass that on first reading. And if it interests this group, essentially what that does is that it creates distance requirements for vendors specifically, well, there's citywide regulations, but where it have the greatest impact is down in our waterfront area around the heads of the wharf and the Stanton Center and kind of that area. And what it does is it creates distance requirements from the recreation trail, from the seawall, from vendor to vendor, and then, and then also creates maximum size limitations for individual vendor spaces. So that will go forward for a second reading on the 6th as well.
Does that apply to permanent location, permanently being able to be a sidewalk vendor? Or is there another set of rules for special events like the Italian festival?
So most of the festivals are coordinated with, and take place in the Custom House Plaza, which is the state property. So those are special events that's separate. And so the state actually doesn't allow sidewalk vending on their property. So it does get a little confusing down there. But yeah, events like the Italian festival continue to happen through the state parks process, but yeah.
There's been a number of complaints recently about that in the public by both people who rent down on the wharf and citizens. And I knew it didn't come to us, so I didn't think it that important to us, but thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, it was a lively discussion.
It was indeed, and I look for it to be another lively discussion on the 6th.
Well, thanks, Levi. So we're done at 4:45. Thanks, everybody.